Good evening, welcome. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the agenda including time limits.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move forward. I do want to make a note that this is a workshop and so it has more of a format where it allows more of an interchange between the board members and advisory staff. And today we have Trina Mars from the Marin County Office of Education. And I probably should ask you, I've always referred to your last name as Mars. Is it Mars or Meers?
Morris.
Oh, both are wrong. Okay.
Actually, it's supposed to be modest, but we've...
Well, I'll try that. Okay. So I apologize for that. So that means that the public comment may not occur for a good hour and a half. And I apologize for anyone that's here specifically for that reason, but we really have some very important items to get through and we want to make sure that all the information is on the table so that we can move forward. So we'll move on to the actual agenda item, the budget work session in response to first interim report, and I'll pass it along to Dr. Yoshihara to take it from here.
Thank you. I'm going to speak up loud. Hopefully the mics can pick this up because I will be referencing things around the room. I do want to start off by thanking our friends at the County Office of Education, Trina Mars, Deputy Superintendent, as well as Kate Lane, who works with our fiscal staff on a lot of the information that's here tonight and which this is based on. So thank you for being a resource to us and engaging us this evening.
You're welcome.
We have a lot of work ahead. I wrote some stuff up here on the sheets for the board reference because the board, I know does their homework. I'm not going to spend time doing stuff that I'm assuming you've already seen and read. Basically, it provides with regards to why we're here today, why this is taking place, and it also talks about what brought us here today. What is all the stuff we've done up to this point? And so therefore, this conversation, although for some may seem new, really isn't new. We've been at this for over two years, starting with an enrollment growth committee, excuse me, a facilities budget study committee, then a facilities committee, then a lot of other studies along the way and conversations that have brought us to this point here today. So that's really the context of the background that we have. On the right, there is an agenda. It doesn't quite total the two hours. That's by design because I do know some things go longer. We do have a public here who may wish to speak as well. So that's really what we have, the direction where we're going to hopefully board provides how this work will take place and who will be doing it. What I'm calling the delta, we certainly have a certain amount of work to do as it relates to a dollar amount. So I'm going to talk about what that looks like and some suggestions, and then a timeline in which this needs to be done. There was guidance within this first interim letter, which was included in tonight's meeting as well as the last board meeting. That sort of was a backdrop for the timeline, but I'm going to get into more detail of what the timeline will look beyond that first interim letter. And then the deliverables, what do we need to do and by when? So I hope to get to that point late in the meeting and then close up with any next steps. Should the board want another meeting? Should the county office want to engage at a later point? We can discuss that towards the end. So that's the plan tonight. Please feel free to eat. I know some of you may be coming straight from work as I go through this here tonight. Any questions, comments? Interrupt me as I go through this. Can you hear me okay for the most part back there? So I'm going to start with the is the direction. So what staff needs is we need to know who's going to do this work. I'm going to assume it's not the board and it's not just the superintendent, but what I would recommend is some other group composed of a broad stakeholder base to do this work that can then bring back the recommendations to the board at some future point or points, depending on, you know, what we're going to look at in the timeline later on. One of the areas that we've considered on this is an ad hoc group that we formed this year that is broad-based, and that's the LCAP Fiscal Advisory Committee. This was a committee that we formed with the intention to work with the district as we approach each of our major reporting periods, our fiscal major reporting periods. That was already the design prior to all this. And so this is a structure that exists relatively new, but one that existed and one that I think could have applicability here. Just as a reminder, it is composed of essentially 16 representative groups. I won't go through all of them, but it does include the board, administrative staff, students, our labor groups, both CSEA and TFT, as well as our foundations, our parent groups, our community groups. We also have an equity focus, so there's an equity representative on there as well as a nonprofit representative. So it's pretty broad-based, and we feel that this group is one that would be helpful in sort of leveraging the work and carrying this forward. So that's the recommendation in terms of setting direction. Again, the idea is that by having a broad group, it allows the conversations on a more detail level to take place and bring that back to the board for the board's consideration at some future date or dates.
I have a question.
Laura, yes?
Michael and I sit on that advisory group, and I'm wondering if we should recuse ourselves from the group, given that it's going to be setting direction and making recommendations to the board.
My initial thought is no, not necessarily you and Michael, but having board members on that. I think the, this board understands that you are representatives and by virtue of that, you aren't making a decision in those meetings on behalf of the board. What we may consider, and I'm open to input on this, is what role to take in that group, whether it's more as observers or one of more active input because it is something that come back and could have some broader ramifications for the district. So I don't know. I'm certainly open to having you there as a voice in which, you know, to what extent do you get involved. Usually, when you, when, my experience is when you get down to a point where you're looking at recommendations and you get to a point when you're prioritizing, i.e. dots or something, we may excuse the board from prioritizing because that, again, is something that's going to come to the whole board. I don't know, Trina, anybody else?
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense to, I think there's real add value to having two members of the board participate in a broad representative group like that. But in terms of the, when it comes right down, if you go through an exercise like that, I think that makes a lot of sense, David, to maybe step away from the actual prioritization practice or exercise that you might go through. But I think the connectivity to the board, you would be able to offer, I think, some rich dialogue and perspective from the board's perspective in the discussion and the work that the committee would do, knowing that you're not the board there. You're two individuals. You don't necessarily represent the board. You're there as two trustees, and anytime, as you know, you step outside your role as a full board, you have no authority.
Right. So it would be similar to the Budget Study Committee?
Yes.
In that there would be, on that committee, there were two trustees?
Yes.
And when it came to dot time?
Prioritization.
We sat there and did nothing.
And that's my experience as well when I've done this in the past, is that traditionally we've had board representation on the committees until it got down to some point close to prioritization structure.
I'm wondering if it would help to provide a little bit of information of what you envisioned the work that this group will do?
Sure.
Or were you planning on reaching that later?
Yeah, so I wanted to see if it's going to overlap in regards to that. If you remind me later in that, as we get to the deliverables, I can come back to that because it'll tie into what we decide for two and three.
Sounds great. Thank you.
So if the board is, again, so we're looking for direction. So if the board, I want to do a check, a nod or something, if the board is okay with the recommendation to use this ad hoc group that already exists, the LCAP Fiscal Advisory Committee, as our group to be tasked with this work?
So is this a consensus?
Yeah.
It's not an action, but a consensus?
Correct, yeah. Just to see, again, just sort of nod or at least, I could do thumbs up or whatever, but it's not a vote. Sent to people or...
I'd like to say that, unless you already mentioned it, most of the people in this committee have been vetted via some application process, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, I couldn't think of a better group to approach this than that group I recommended highly.
Yeah, so for example, we have a city representative with Jim McCann, who was vetted through the City Managers Group, foundations that were represented in itself. So yes, it's a vetted group. All right.
What do we do? All nod or since we're not technically...
I engage, yes. Everybody just looks like they're okay. I think if you weren't, you would let me know, is what I sense, but thank you.
Nobody's squirming.
Nobody's squirming or...
Okay. Well, watch the body language here.
Body language is good. Okay. So I'm going to move on to this next piece here, what I'm calling the delta. So what I'm going to ask here is that the board needs to help staff determine the amount that it wants the reserve to get to. And I'm using the reserve as essentially the amount of money that sits in the ending fund balance. At the end of the day, when all the money is spent and whatever is unspent comes through, we have this ending fund balance. So sometimes we set designations for it, some that are required for economic uncertainty, some that are more district or local designations. They're all still part of that, what I would call, reserve. And that has varied over the years. Up until two years ago, it has been increasing to what I would argue a very stable state for the district, a very safe state for the district, and has allowed us to weather where we're at now. That being said, back on October of 2016, I think the board and certainly some in the community recall, we did have a workshop around, I think we called it the reserve at that point, or the budget reserve, around what amount would be comfortable for the board. And Trina Mars also came to that meeting, I recall, and said some words, shared some information with the board, and talked about what were some recommended guidelines. If we refer to this first interim letter that many of you have, I want to make sure I get the right page, it talks in here about the depletion of the reserve at an escalating rate that essentially talks about escaping to 4% by 20, at the end of 2019, '20. I think it's page three. Yes, what, by page three anyway, towards the middle, there's a chart in there, and right below that chart, and I'll quote here. "The cumulative impact of this projected deficit spending is an 82% decline in fund balance over the current plus two subsequent years, leaving the district with reserves of $4 million or 4% of general fund expenditures as of June 30th, 2020." So we go to, you know, a 20-plus percent reserve, down to 4% in a few years at this rate of deficit spending. So certainly that's concerning to us, certainly concerning the County Office of Education. And so that is the backdrop for sort of this delta. A couple of other reminders, some people are very interested in what one month of payroll is. One month of payroll is roughly 8 and 1/3%, so, you know, 1/12. And another number that is often handy as weaver last time is the GFOA, Governmental Finance...
Officers Association.
Officers Association. Recommendation of a reserve of 17%, which is roughly two months of payroll. And I think, and I agree with our county office, that for basic aid districts, we often like it higher than that. I would also argue that that's one of the reasons under the Reserve CAP bill that community fund districts argued so hard to be exempt from that, is because even a 10% amount for us would be difficult. So for community-funded districts, that amount needs to be higher. And so 17% is one that the board, and I see Barbara, I'll get to in a second here, 15% to 17% is a number that the board proposed back in October of 2017. It is one that I think makes a lot of sense for us to reach for, reach towards again. But I'm happy to have a conversation and a dialogue in this because I do need direction for what this LCAP Fiscal Advisory Committee is going to need to do. They need to know what amount, what's the target? What do they need to get to? So Barbara, thank you.
Is it still true that 17% is what bonding agencies are looking at in terms of reserve?
I would say bonding agencies would look at a number of things that indicate a stable fiscal environment. Your reserve level's only one, and the height of the, 17% would be one of them. But if they look at a multi-year projection and they see the kind of sustained deficit spending that your district has, even if you had 17%, that's going to be a mark against you. So they're not looking at just one indicator. It's multiple indicators that they're reviewing when they assess your bond rating.
Is that, are those figures, are those assessments, are those, is that something we need to bear in mind for future revenue or interests or what we're going to be perhaps going after? And so that when we do a multi-year, that we're also getting ourselves physically secured so that if we need to go out for a bond, those factors will be in place at some point?
Yeah, and so here's what I would say, when bond rating agencies are looking at your district's fiscal health, they're looking over a trend period. They're never looking at one single year. So they want to see stability. And what they would likely view as something worrisome from their rating perspective is swings. So, so, you know, you start off, so let's just paint out a hypothetical, if the district did nothing and continued on the trend it was, and it spent down its reserves at 4%, even though technically speaking, the district might continue to be positively certified under the measurement of AV 1200 and the county office's standards. In that fourth year out, let's say all of a sudden you go from $6 million deficit spending to zero deficit spending. A rating agency is going to start connecting the dots and recognize that that's an abrupt change in your operations in one year, especially if it has to then continue because you're down at minimums. You can no longer at that point deficit spend at all. You're right there at the minimum. So you have now had to do this course correction overnight. That's alarming to a rating agency because that's going to indicate some instability, and they're going to wonder how long you can sustain that kind of dramatic change in your operations. So, and again, they tend to look holistically at a district's finances when they're assessing for rating purposes. Reserve levels are one, deficit spend trends are another, ratio of salaries to expenditures to revenues are another, what are your, what are your revenue sources? As a basic aid district, they're going to look at assessed value. What are your, what's your property tax base look like? What are the increases in assessed value trends over time? How are you adjusting to that? So they're, they really, like us, they dig in to a lot of the intricate pieces to your financial structure.
And unless I'm mistaken, I believe Tam maintains maybe only along with Mill Valley the highest rating for bonding purposes.
I'd have to look to Kate to that. Is that about right?
I believe we're AAA when we last...
You were AAA, and I'm not sure, I know is AAA.
Yeah.
Right. But I don't know if anyone else in the county has that.
Yeah. So I think that speaks certainly to the strength of our, you know, district FISC as well as our AV within the greater community, certainly, and our stability.
Well, your property owners appreciate your rating.
So hopefully that helps, Barbara, with regards to that. Other questions as it relates to the delta and this reserve number? Do you have some questions, thoughts, agreement, disagreement?
Trina, you should just spell out, make sure everybody understands why the property owners appreciate the fact that we have a AAA rating, right? It's because the bonds can be shared at a lower rate of interest.
That's right.
The lowest, yes.
Right, the lowest rate of interest.
That's right. So the bonded indebtedness from the district is directly impacted by your bond rating.
Right. And our ability to borrow.
And your ability to borrow in the future, but most importantly, the level of your debt, your debt is directly impacted by your interest rates, which are directly impacted by your bond rating.
It can increase your bonding capacity by being able to secure a lower interest rate because we are limited when we put out a bond to, the cost of the taxpayer cannot exceed a certain amount, so we...
Yeah, the per AV.
Right.
Yeah, Daniel, you want to go?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask later on, because I wanted to ask to see a member of the public, but if the district capture, or let's say if they did something about what is happening right now and corrected it, that would not show the spat that you're concerned about, right? Let's say we made a decision and we implemented a suggestion in a year, that's going to be against the spat.
That's the goal.
Okay.
I have a question for Ms. Mars. I hope I said that right. As long as we have you here, we did have this workshop, and we, we as a board, this board, came to the 15% to 17% number, and I'm wondering, I know you can't give us, you know...
Can't tell you.
Can't tell us what to do, but you have a lot of expertise and have seen what other districts do, other basic aid districts, know what their delta is, what their reserve level is, and I'm wondering if the 15% to 17% range seems like a good goal.
Yeah, it's, and that, there's no hesitation on that, on our part. We publish a common message, budget guidance to districts three times a year, maybe even four. And each time we talk about reserves and that, it's a, it's a document that we don't always, we don't just develop on our own in Marin County. We develop in partnership with all 58 counties in the state. So this is a common message for all county offices and their guidance that we give to districts, and we always recommend 17% using the Government Financial Officers Association standard, sort of the best practices in terms of maintaining your level of reserves. In addition to that, we always comment, especially in Marin, that basic aid districts, so that's the standard for all districts, and then we also always say, basic aid districts always need above minimums in terms of their reserves. Now, am I saying you should be higher than 17%? That's a, that's a cultural decision and level. We're never going to tell you to, as you said, we're never going to tell you exactly how. Our role is always going to be very specific and related to what the state minimums are. In terms of our evaluation of your district, we know where the threshold is. It's at the state minimum. But in terms of your ability to operate as a basic aid district, it's all the more important to operate with higher-than-minimum reserves, 17% being the standard.
Thank you.
Other thoughts or questions, input from the board?
So what is that number, 17%?
In terms of a dollar amount?
Yeah.
Well, $80 million total expenditures, you're looking at somewhere between 14 to 15 million.
14 to 15 million on an $80 million expenditures.
You're showing a $4 million ending balance in 2019, '20, which is approximately 4%. So to get to 6% of that, we have quite a deal to do.
Is that right?
Public math is a dangerous game.
Yes. But that's certainly one we would, we certainly would figure out with the LCAP Budget Advisory Committee. So, so that's the recommendation here, is to work towards that amount. This is one, again, that the board has discussed publicly, at least in the conversations we've had since then. I haven't sensed a superintendent, you know, a desire to be lower than that. Certainly, we are lower than that, and the board, or at least trending lower than that, and the board has expressed concern at more than one meeting around, concern for that for a lot of different reasons, and we've talked about those publicly in the past too, on what's driving these. But I think to get us back to that place, I think is important. I think that's the reason we have reserves, right? And to remind people that reserves are one time, and we can, that's what we're doing now. We can spend it down one time. We can make, you know, these contributions to facilities, to put up structures, again, one time, and they're good for that. But we need to be reminded that unless we replenish that, we will have a larger concern in the future. And I think it's good practice. It's one, you know, for many things that I watch our governor do with his budget stabilization money, his ability now to get $10 billion in the so-called State Ready Day Fund, I think speaks to some essence of his prudence around future sort of disasters that have struck education in the past. And so much as the state has tried to get a reserve up to respectable levels, I think we need to make sure we turn this around back to a point of, again, 17%, you know, 15% to 17% again is what the board uses, I would say. Moving that direction is a whole lot better than where we are now.
So you would like to get a sense from us whether we changed our minds or not?
I would like to have you change your mind, but some of you, you know, I think it just simply, through your commentary indicates that that's a goal, or again, just through body language, again, any direction forward to take back to that group if that's something you understand and accept and support, really.
Where will we be again at the end of this fiscal year?
At the end of this year, um, for, I'm not sure the expenditure, do we have the actual amount?
Yeah, it's on page two.
Thank you. And which one should we be looking at? The percent there?
17, 18 millions is over on the left. So it looks like, I mean, I'm looking at the graph.
Yeah, the percent's on the right, correct? So I'm...
What is that, Kate? Is that 28?
Yeah, I'm putting, it goes to the percentages, but it doesn't. So it's somewhere in the region of 20, 25 or so percent, and it's somewhere in the region of, say, 16 to 17 million dollars.
Okay. Yeah, I'm looking at about 20% then. But if everybody sees the graph, that's on page two in the middle, and it...
Oh, yeah, sorry, you're looking at 18, 19, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, you're right, 20%.
I'm looking, it looks like right around 20%.
10 million.
Yeah. So it looks like around 20% on that line graph, so that helps.
I do recall when we had our workshop that you referred to, and that we did come to consensus that we wanted to not go lower than 17%. We said somewhere between 15 and 17%. We, prior to that, were operating in a much higher reserve. Wasn't it closer to 25 or something? Oh, it's right here.
Yeah, if you look at, yeah, if you look at really 15, 16, and even before, you could see...
Your high was about 27, if I recall.
27, okay, so...
Maybe even 20.
Maybe even higher.
Right. Maybe even 29.
So given everything you've told us and reminded us, I mean, I personally have no reason to change that as a goal. I still look at this the same way I did in October 2016.
Yeah, I'm good with 17%.
Superb, Chuck?
Are the extra expenditures that we've authorized recently, for example, with facilities, have they changed the projections? Are we currently anticipated to be, I mean, where are we in terms of budget?
I can give you some numbers.
Yeah, let me just be broad-based. We have several million in the facilities fund to fund current and future needs. We've had some preliminary discussion of whether we need to increase that money in that separate fund or not. As Lars and his staff work... As Lars and his staff work on sort of what the architects are bringing back, we may come to that decision. We also continue to work with Tara and, and her department in terms of what is really the minimum we need as it relates to portable structures and other related costs. So, to the extent that where we were, I'd say, a year to two years ago, and what we projected, that has been significantly scaled back.
It has.
So, so the numbers have been brought back down, we, what we don't know is, is what's in there currently enough? I want to say it's three million-ish?
We had three million before we started interim housing phase one, so we ate into that. We definitely have reduced the number of portables and correspondingly, number of projected new teachers, based on the growth, but construction costs are up thirty to forty percent. So, even though we've reduced the number of structures, which means reduced site preparation and so forth, the cost could be as much or more, even though there's less, and then, so I've got some rough figures here, that between the, the two restrooms at Redwood, four portals at Redwood, four portals at TAM that we intend to have finished by August of 2018, and I'm very conservative, particularly in the site preparation, but it's based on conversation with architects and so forth, so it wasn't just out of the air, we're, we're just shy of two million dollars this summer in expenditures, we're, we're 1.96. And again, you know, I'm conservative, I'd rather be able to report out later that it didn't reach that, that plateau, but...
But for purposes of, thank you, but for purposes, for purposes of this chart, right, which is, which is on, you know, the county's letter, which in turn is a reflection of the analysis of the, of the interim, right?
Yeah, Restrictor General Fund.
Yeah, so, but we think that this is still, in light of all of this information, we, this is still a reasonable projection in terms of where we expect to be at the end of this year and next year.
It, it is reasonable, there are some moving parts that always take place, I would say, a couple that are of note, and worthy of note, is the governor's budget, which is coming, that could provide, I would argue, some one-time dollars to school districts, which he's done in the past, which, again, because reserves are one time, it's going to adjust a one time in the system through, again, I believe mandate money, but he's gonna, he's gonna pay some amount of money on that, I think current projections were three hundred per ADA, but we'll wait and see what they end up at. The other one is, as Tara and Lars work on the staff tied to growth in the out years, there will be revision of the budget on, on that as well. They still, as a first interim, by design, we have left it in the budget at that point. We wanted to make sure the numbers were firm enough, as the sign-ups are taking place, that by second interim, there will be an adjustment in there to reflect, and my hope is certainly downward of, of staff that was in there for, for growth purposes. So that will, anytime you, you adjust staff, those could be larger numbers, so that will be a positive, ongoing, to accept that, we, we believe the, the trend data on growth. So those are the two, on the side of creating a better picture. On the other hand, I would also argue, as Lars has shared, we have, we have some significant construction related costs, including a elevator thing at TAM, and sometimes special education costs, which, which we do know is, is a needed cost, but one that, again, while we can estimate a certain level of growth, if that exceeds what our estimation is, those, those can be bigger as well. So, at, at the end, I would say, it, it'll be close to this, because they, they will tend to balance each other out, if we get some revenue for this and it gets taken out because of that, there will be an evening out. But in terms of the Restrictor General Fund, as Trina knows, these are snapshots in time, at the end of October 31, at first interim, October 31, I think, that is what the picture portrays. Second interim will take us through Jan. 31, so we'll have better...
And these graphs are taken directly off of your multi-year projection that came before the board with your first interim. So when we look at, we basically take your data, your budget document, your budget numbers, and then we crunch them through, you know, sort of our reasonability analysis, and as I shared at the last board meeting, TAM is at the top of our list, and so what that means for us is we get very up close and personal with your, with your business official, Kate is working very closely with Daniel, to sort of dig deeper, what we would consider much more granular examination of your budget numbers, especially as they relate to the out years, we're still doing that work, we just started getting into your current level of projections that are built into your budget, and so I would expect by second interim, we would have a better handle on, as would Daniel. As David stated, budget documents are always evolving documents when new information becomes known, but we'll, we'll be partnering with, with the district as we get deeper into the, into the projections that are included in this, in the two subsequent years especially.
I just wanted to mention too, that we are in the middle of negotiations, and those numbers, whatever we settle on, are not reflected in...
Correct.
All that we have in front of us.
Also, I want to clarify, maybe it's more of a question, so when you would like us, when you want us to come back to you and tell you that yes or no, we, we still want to stand with the 17%, you're not asking us to say, stand to the 17% and correct it this year, that this is, you're asking...
That'll be the next one, the timeline.
Okay, so that, that really is more the long-term goal.
Yep, absolutely, yes.
But if you came back to us when we get to the timeline and said, here's your range of time, you know, that, that maybe this isn't a far-range goal, that we might change our mind, I suppose.
Yes.
So, we might have to come back to the delta question.
Yes.
If you come back and say, you have two to four years to correct it, then it might, and we see how hard it would be to do, we may want to change our goal of 17%, we might have a short term and a long term.
Yes, and, and like most things, they're, they're based on our current conditions, and so if the conditions change, then we would have to just, you know, the, not only, you know, the, the timeline and the delta, but, you know, maybe other things, but certainly based upon what the information we have now, I, I would, and certainly, Trina can chime in, if we show a genuine motivation to, to turn this around, not only to the, the public, but to the county office, then that will go a long way in terms of, okay, we've, we've taken these large structural deficits, and now, you know, either they've been reduced by 50% or some, some significant fraction, shows that the board has, has the, the strength to be able to, you know, to, to go through that. That's, my, my experience is that that's what they're looking for, you know, to what level of resolve can they do this, you know, are you going to hit it 100%? Maybe not, but I, you know, at the end of the day, I, I don't think you'll get a, an equally strong letter if you're, you're making significant progress.
That's correct, that's exactly right. So when the county office looks at, we, we, you know, not unlike bond rating agencies, we look more holistically at, at how a district is functioning financially and how its, its budget is structured, and what its investments are, both currently and in the future, and if it looks like, and the, the district is making a demonstrated effort to correct the current trend that's on paper now, that goes a long ways, and then, to what extent is that sustained? You know, we've seen districts in the past that make sort of the proverbial down payment towards reducing a deficit, and they hold it for one year, and then go right back. And that's, that's not a, it's not an uncommon thing to do, because there are always a lot of pressures, and we're talking about the education of our children, and so there's no greater need and no more compelling need than that. And so, it's always, what we look at is, and we completely concur with that, but at the same time, we say, just don't forget about tomorrow's children, because whatever you do, if you smooth it, and you make those thoughtful, steady adjustments, it looks, it, it, it's not as disruptive as kind of doing those knee-jerk reactions where you make a cut and then restore, and then make a cut and restore.
What, in a thumbnail kind of sketch, what is it, because I have no idea, what does insolvency actually look like, very briefly?
You run out of cash.
Yeah, but does somebody else then come in?
Oh, I see.
Come to the board?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that.
Would you?
Yeah. Thankfully, in California, there's only been about a dozen failures to that degree since 92, since AV 1200 was enacted, and essentially what happens is, when a district runs out of money, and a, you know, there's quali, there's positive, qualified and negative, and people think negative's the worst, it's pretty bad, you don't want to go to negative, it makes your life, it really ruins your day. I will say, but beyond negative is worse, and so, negative just says you may run out of cash in the current or subsequent year, one year, not may, you will. Basically, negative is you will run out of cash either this year or next year. There are a lot of districts that hover in that negative certification for several years, they're just basically hanging on. What happens when they're cutting it so close to the, to the margins, the slightest little thing pushes them over, and that's this terrible, it's a really cruel waiting game, where there's, it's all about timing, and essentially what happens is, there's, are either your local senator or assemblyman has to carry a bill to the legislature to ask for an emergency appropriation for the district to stay solvent. Once that happens, the superintendent is gone, and the school district is stripped of its powers. The state then assigns a trustee to the, to the district to basically run the school district, where the board serves only as advisory. And that carries on for an undetermined amount of time, that's continually assessed based upon the district's ability to recover financially, and begin to repay that emergency appropriation back to the state. And then some instances, it has taken upwards of 20 years. And more recent, Inglewood probably being the most recent, is maybe less than, maybe about 10 years. Oakland was there 13 years ago and is on the verge of becoming insolvent again. It's a very, very difficult, it's a very difficult thing to climb out of, because essentially what happens is, you're, you know, it's like living on your credit card, you're not only now, you have to try to live within the appropriation that you had to begin with, but now you have a huge debt to pay back. And so it's a real, very undesirable place to be, because it's, it's just every district I've ever seen and watched from afar, thankfully, I've never been involved in a district that's gone insolvent. And in my tenure in county offices, I've been in, been in public education for 24 years, I've been in county offices for 15, I've never even had a negative district, so please don't be my first.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll oversimplify here, but I think for us, it's even a little bit more precarious because of the way our finances are structured, partially because we are community-funded, but also because most of our dollars flow into the general fund. Having been in districts in, in the past that have more money coming in through restricted dollars, you're able to, maneuver's gonna sound like a bad word, but you're able, Trina knows what I'm talking about, but you're able to, to borrow between your funds, and you're able to borrow from, from other sources to what we call move the cash. Again, cash is king, I'm not going to get into, into a conversation on cash flow, I think what you, we get into with negative is, is cash flow and the ability to make, to make payroll. And so, we're a little bit more precarious of that, because we do depend so much on our property, you know, our A V flowing in, and they flow in at very certain times of years, very reliable, but at the same time, we don't have a lot of other sources to, to pull from. Our restricted dollars, as Tara well knows, is not a gigantic amount of money that we can, you know, leverage, whereas, I would argue, large districts have, you know, considerable dollars that can be leveraged in a cash flow situation, as long as the budget is, is sound. So, so let me re, recapture the, the conversation of where I think we're at. So we're setting the direction already, we talked about this LCAP Budget Advisory, Budget Advisory Committee being tasked with the work, the work now in regards to how much do they need target for a dollar value, a percentage amount, over some period of time, which will be the next part. The recommendation is this 15% to 17% range, 17% certainly being desirable, as it relates to October 20, 2015 meeting, I want to say, 2016?
Twenty-sixteen.
The October 2016 meeting. It, it, from the comments and the body language, I sense that that is the direction that is supported. So, okay, we will move on to the next big piece. The next big piece is the timeline. So we now know how much, we now know the who, we now need to know the when, okay? When does this need to happen, right? You see here on the, the page three of the first interim letter, the, again, the 4% reserve at the end of that fiscal year under current projections. Again, as I, as I talked about earlier, the amount, while important, is less critical than the trend, we need to reverse the trend. I think it's also important at this stage to be sensitive to the specific information that can cause really emotions to, to rise, and the last thing we want to do is create undue sort of panic, that's not the purpose. I think the purpose is to, to carefully plan and to thoughtfully plan and to not create panic. Panic doesn't serve anybody well, and I think it leads, again, to a conversation around emotion rather than one based upon the information that we all have in front of us. So the timeline, what does that look like? When do we, when do we need to, to get this sort of corrected, right? This is, this is, this is, this is a large ship, right? We're, we're not, you know, in L.A., but we're certainly not, you know, tiny either. So we have a lot of moving parts, we have a lot of things at play, we have students who continue to come to us, we have programs that are going well, and all these need to take place for us to obviously offer this level of education that our community has come to expect. So, as I thought about this, the recommendation that, that I would present to the board here this evening is, is twofold. The first one is what I call reversing the trend. How do we go from deficit spending in the range of, I would say, five million plus, you know, even upwards of six million for the next couple of years? How do we get that down, at least to essentially, you know, not be deficit-y, right? We, we consider, you know, zero. In other words, your revenues match your expenditures, or perhaps even exceed yours. How do we stop, I don't like to use the word bleeding, but certainly the, the deficit spending, how do we stop the deficit spending? That's, that's the first goal. So I would like us to be able to address that, that stoppage in essentially two years. So by the end of 2019, 2020, to stop that. So what that means is, is to go from this large amount of structural deficit down to, to zero, or better. So what that will do then is, is, is because that's a, bar rate, pen here to show you what's happening. So we know in, in general that revenues, let's say, have been, generally for the district, have been on a slight upward trend, right? We, we property values go up, governor releases one-time dollars, some, there's a little bit of federal money, and there's some coal attached to that, so revenues have generally been going up over the last number of years, even, even during the height of the recession for us, because property values did not decline in this community. Expenditures, on the other hand, what we've seen was this happening, right? Is that at some point we crossed, and when the expenditures then exceed the revenue, this creates the deficit, so this structural deficit. And so what, what I would need, would propose is that we essentially close this in two years, so that this delta, or this spread, becomes zero. Okay, so by 2019, 2020, so wherever that is out here, this is my expenditures, what I propose then...
It becomes zero or positive.
At least zero, yes. So that the expenditures... So that the expenditures, while currently are projected to do this, we will need to bring it back to this, okay, by 2019, 2020. And so by virtue of that, I would argue that this, there will be proposed reductions to make this happen again because if we say that, well, we're going to just wait and in one year do this, number one, there's sort of a realistic factor like, can that really happen? And yes, maybe it could. The board can take sort of an extreme stance and say, we're going to do this all in one year. By the same token, that's going to cause a lot of heartache and a lot of pain. And so by the fact that this will slow down and trend this way, this is a multi-year process. We will certainly have some this year that are a little bit easier to, to manage. Like I said, we have some things that are built into the budget such as staffing increases that were first interim that will, will be adjusted. But then this LCAP Budget Advisory Committee will then have some work to do, and I'll get into that at the deliverable stage, to bring this curve down to make this zero point. So that's the first piece, is in two years, we get to this stage so that we're no longer deficit. Again, I need to be realistic because 6 million is still a large number, no matter how we look at it. So I don't want to sort of say, we're going to just do this in one year. I think it'll take a couple of years. The next phase is once we get to this point now, the, the belief or the thought is that we could continue and sustain that trend now to, to allow the revenues then to exceed the expenditures, right? And so when revenue exceeds expenditures, when do we begin to build back up?
Reserve.
Reserves, thank you. So let's do this. So now when the revenue, again, the revenues can continue to increase at a sort of a steady modest rate, it's, it's very predictable for the most part, right? It's why we budget on these and for the most part, they've held true. So we're going to get a point to expenditures where it hits this. And what I hope from that point then is, is, is we are modest in, in the expenditures and the revenue to allow this buildup back of the reserve. So again, 2019, 2020 for this to happen. This is revenue, this is expenditures. And that by 2021, 1920, 2021, 2022, so two years after that, end of.
Different colored pen.
They would all look the same to me, but yes.
Yeah, I was going to say edit.
So then at this point here, we will have our reserve back at 17%. That's, that's the goal. Okay, so, so let's think about this.
No, 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 no. The goal in two years is to stop the deficit expense.
Stop the deficit, and then after that.
But getting it back to 17% would take longer.
Two, two more years, one more year.
Two more years.
So, so part of the thinking on this is, so let's, let's think about this. So right now, in a worst case scenario, we're down to 4 million at this point, let's just say, right? And, and again, I would argue it's a number higher than that because we're, we're going to trend the reductions down, but is that some color?
Yes, it's pink.
It's pink? All right. I'll check your words. So, so we got pink here at 4%, and that's roughly $4 million, we heard. So if we are going to get back up to 17% reserve, we got to roughly quadruple that 4 million, right? We got to get up to somewhere around 16 million or so. So we got to increase it by $12 million. And so that's roughly, you know, a $6 million a year ask. So the question is, you know, what does that look like and can we do that? So, so that's a question that the, the committee is going to have to take a look at. And that's a question for the board here today too, I think in all fairness, right? Is that, is that overly aggressive? Is it not overly aggressive? It's hard to say at this point. I think it's, it's, for me, it felt like a good place to start because unless we're going to push ourselves, I think we get into complacency and let's say, well, that could be three or four years. Two years is, is, is strong. We will have, you know, again, revenue increasing and so forth during that time. And, you know, that's sort of the projection. And again, if this is higher, this is less, right? If we have 5, 6, 7% here, then to get to the, to the 17 is, is, is an easier lift. And that's, that's the work here too. If we can get this to change quickly, then this work becomes easier. Hopefully I don't get too mathematical. That's not, that's not the intent, but it's a good question. So that's, that's, that's a thought for the board here today. This, again, worst case scenario, right? It doesn't assume any revenue increases. We do know there's conversations around revenue that we'll, we'll be talking about the next meetings. These assume none of those things happening and is only based upon what's currently in our budget assumptions with regards to property values, whatnot.
How, how will this discussion about these figures play into, or can we even think about it, our ask, for example, around parcel tax? Will we not have to kind of keep these discussions going to some degree in a parallel direction?
Yes, that's a good question. I'm going to caveat that for purposes of the county office, while it's nice that we can certainly talk about it, we typically are not allowed to count that in terms of revenue compensation. However, for the purposes of the district's work for the parcel tax and the public's work on the parcel tax, what it will show is it will show what can happen and what will happen, you know, if this is not corrected. And that was part of the letter here. We will need, we, the board will be tasked with some level of duty via resolution that could take place at some future point of what will take place, do we not correct this? And so therefore, my understanding with, as it relates to a parcel tax then is the community becomes attuned to the need for a parcel tax and why it's important to do that. Obviously, this will affect program, this will affect the, the students and what they're going to, what the experience they're going to get. And I would argue the quality of instruction. And I certainly defer to Tara to chime in on that. But that's where it will play in, in relation to a parcel tax. And so yes, while those will run concurrently and this can all be shared with the community as we look at that at the next coming meeting, should the board go that route, that generally, from what we're told and Leslie and more others, works to the benefit of a parcel tax conversation when there's a demonstrated need and a, and a reality of a, of a, of a situation that doesn't portend well.
Michael, did you get your question answered?
Yeah, so, but it's not, of course, just, it's not just an either or, right? Which is it also, if we are also cutting our expenses, it helps our credibility in going to the community by saying, we've got, this is our issue, we have significant budget challenges, there are a variety of, there are multiple components, you know, that we're, you know, that we're using to tackle the problem, right? One of them is we're asking you for more revenue, we're also tightening our belt.
Yeah. And I think the more we demonstrate this that we're doing to reduce, that also builds the credibility as well. That, that shows that the district is also making great efforts to curb, you know, things that are costing money at the same time that we may go out and ask for money.
So do you see this as somewhat of an iterative process? Because I can only imagine when the LCAP committee comes back and describes what it would take to reach the goal you just laid out. If we determine it's just too devastating to the district, at that time, we have the option to extend the 17% goal by an additional two years, for example? Is this, I'm not...
Yeah, that's, that's, that's an interesting scenario.
But to start here is what you're suggesting. Let's start with this.
It's, it's easier to start...
Right here, yeah.
More aggressive, I would argue, than the other way around.
Correct, correct.
Right? If we say five years and then we want it shorter, that's much harder to do than to be, because this, this will show like, you know, that's pretty, that's pretty, and the board may have that opportunity too, right? Because now the committee would task, okay, to get here, this is what we need to do and we need to do this much to get here. And, and the board to make a decision like, all right, we, we, we see that, we get that. What if we took another year? What if we took another two years?
I have one follow-up question. If in fact, you know, as the committee and if the board approves cuts, you know, to, to even get to the zero delta, and those cuts result in larger classrooms that were in our original language for the parcel tax we're operating under now, is that, is that an issue that...
So to get here, for me, this is based upon non-negotiated assumptions. Typically, county offices look for non-negotiated assumptions. So what that typically will look like is, you know, future hires, it looks at non-replacement of staff, so, you know, i.e. retirees, it looks at programmatic reductions, you know, programs that exist that, again, are, are non-negotiated. Again, much like a parcel tax is an uncertain future result, a negotiated increases an uncertain future result. So this is based, for me, on, on non-negotiated circumstances. Now, should there be negotiated circumstances, that will change what that looks like. But this, for me, there was not an assumption that there were some that, and by virtue of that, that's why I come to class size. For, for our district, class sizes are negotiated.
Okay, thank you.
Torino, I looked like you wanted to add.
No, that's perfect.
So yeah, so that doesn't include, again, county offices usually do not accept negotiated pieces. That looks over for all of you. You guys want to...
Timeline then is...
Four years is, is what the proposal is. Two years for this piece and then two years for this piece.
I'm, I'm using timeline in a, in a different way.
Okay.
I'm thinking of...
Deliverables, maybe. Yes, that's... Yeah, that's deliverables. What are we going to produce and by when? Yes.
All right. Okay, that's...
Do you think now, you, when you, when I, you and I met today and we were discussing some of these issues, you shared the fact that even though I know we're not assuming we're, we're going to have a parcel tax that passes, what you were explaining to me is that even if we did, we're still looking at cuts, that because of the timing, just...
Yes, I can share logistically without getting too far ahead of that, but yes, I can. So in the context of the conversation about parcel tax, we've had discussion with regards to when we can count the revenue, right? So in, in a very broad sense, a June parcel tax, correct me, but I believe this is accurate, in a June parcel tax, or I would argue before, the district is able to count the revenue in that current fiscal year. Or, you know, the, if we were to go out for a parcel tax this June, let's say, for all those filming, don't assume this, this is a hypothetical scenario. If we were to go in June, that revenue could be counted in the next fiscal year.
Next fixed fiscal year.
If we were to go out for the same parcel tax in November or later, that would be counted in the subsequent fiscal year, right? So, so we're, so it would be counted in 1920.
1920.
Because the, because the bills have already been sent out.
That's right.
And I had a long conversation with the, the tax collector on this, and he has shared with me that while we certainly could go out, we make a lot of people quite angry because they've already paid part of their bill and to get an adjustment after half it's gone out, we would not be making a lot of friends.
Right.
So I think for all intensive purposes, a November situation means that any revenue coming in on, on a, on a parcel tax side is at least two years out, whereas a June means revenue would come in the next fiscal year. And so therefore, this here and the impact that this creates will not have any support of a parcel tax really for the two years. So this is all done without a parcel tax in a November scenario. And then in a June scenario, you will have that adjustment if a tax passes. Does that make sense? Again, that's, that's all hypothetical. These are ones I'm certainly happy to engage in at the February meetings as well. Again, by the same sort of disclaimer, we don't get to count that for purposes of the county office, but certainly if it does pass, we could certainly now count that. That'll be, that'll be real. Is that consistent with what you're told? I'm told from the, the, the tax collectors on the June ballot, they look at every district that has something on the ballot and they're prepared to make the adjustments as soon as it passes to, to go out. So I do feel pretty confident if we, if it was a June, you would count it. If it's November, it's the following year. So those are things the board will have to look at in, in the coming weeks.
Are we out of deliverables yet?
Almost. So I want to make sure we're good with this before we move on. So two years to get to the zero for the trend and then two years to get to the reserve of out. Again, this is, I agree, I think to Barbara, this is pretty aggressive, but let's let the committee do its work, let the board come back and say, yeah, it's aggressive or, okay, we get it. This is where, this is where we want to be, okay? We're going to move to deliver, deliverables now. So in the deliverables section, do you have it on time? So this is what I call the what needs to be done by when. So what do we need to do and when do we need to do it? As you saw in the letter, second interim is an important benchmark. Second interim will come to the board in March. It will take into account current information in our budget situation through the end of January. And is one, that I'll get to a little more, but is, is an important benchmark. Having, that being said, having a clearly defined plan with the timelines at second interim can help prevent us from having, this is probably not familiar with it, but I know Torino and others are, from having what we call a third interim and possibly carry us until adopted budget. So if we can get something done at that point, we, we would be, we would be spared. And that's necessarily a bad thing, but we would not be doing a third interim report. I've done third interims in the past. They are just another point, I know Daniel's excited back there to consider such a thing. So again, having, having that at second interim is important in that it, it can, can put the county, say, okay, we get it, you know, you, you get to sort of continue your work until budget adoption. And at the same time, we need a plan that is more specific by budget adoption in June, late June typically. First, first presentation, early June, adoption at second. So what will that look like? I think that's one that I would like the LCAP Fiscal Advisory Committee to, to process. I don't know at this point if that should take place at, at this level, but what I, what I envision or what I think it could look like is, this is where the county office is helpful, is at second interim, we staff with this committee be able to, to outline a level of commitment that by future date, by, by budget adoption, we will have a plan that, you know, closes the structural deficit in two years. And I don't know about this, you know, either solves or begins to solve restoring the reserve up to those levels. Again, I need to be realistic here because March to June, again, saw a lot of stuff happening. This committee is a large group to get them together, but if this committee can indicate that level, that, that planning will, will happen and that will come to the board by June, is that adequate? Then at the June meeting, this gets a little bit harder because of the timelines of this parcel tax conversation in the background, because we don't know all of that yet. But at the June meeting, assuming worst case scenarios, is the county office okay with some level? We talked about this at the last board meeting in open session, around a level of commitment that indicates just an FTE amount. Because let's, let's, let's really, let's think about this realistically, realistically here now. Unless we're going to do something by this March for certificate staff, we aren't going to count it in the next year. That's the reality, right? That's the reality. So I, that's sort of my assumption. Nothing's going to be done by March so that the, the projections out there are pretty much going to be pretty close to what they're going to be. But what the group can do is then say, by... But what the group can do is then say, "By budget adoption, we, you know, recommend some level of reduction." We've got to figure what that amount looks like, but some level of FTE to take place over the course of the next year, so that the board in the next fiscal year can then indicate the level of, either through attrition and layoffs or combination thereof, for that to take place. Then that can be counted, because the layoffs will then happen in the subsequent year. That's the thinking in the deliverables. Barbara's kind of got her quizzical look, but think about that as you formulate your question. So that, maybe I need to create a chart, and I can do that. So then, we can then count that in the 1920 year here. Michael first.
Yeah, I'm a little, did you have a question?
No.
But we have, so March, like March is our deadline for layoffs.
For certificated.
Right, so what you're effectively saying is, we're not, we're not on a pace to be able to even make a recommendation one way or the other by that point. But, but in addition, though, we have staffing plans, right, which are, which are presumably being developed, in development now, and ultimately which we're going to approve. I don't know if we approved that, I don't know when we approved that.
April.
April. But staffing plans includes hiring, right? So we could, we're not faced with that same March deadline if we're dealing with staffing plans, right? So we could make some decisions with respect to next year's budget on the staffing plan side that would contribute to starting to reduce our level of expense.
Only, yes, only in items that have been budgeted. For example, if the staffing plan calls for an increase in FTE that isn't budgeted, and the board doesn't support it, the board doesn't approve it, that doesn't change the fiscal audit because it wasn't budgeted yet, right? So if it is budgeted, there are a few things that are budgeted. That was part of the conversation we had earlier. So we have some FTE increases in the budget for the enrollment growth, and those will come through in the staffing plan. So if, by the same token, if the board approves an amount lower than what's budgeted, then yes, then this will come down as well, without, without layoffs. Does that make sense as well?
The challenge for Torino in preparing that staffing plan and bringing it to the board is that, you know, there's been, there's been talk, not from the board, but from others, "What about a hiring freeze?" Remember, we have contractual class size ratios that don't allow for that in some instances. We still have to have enough certificated staff to have a number, you know, the correct number of classes to meet the contractual class size ratios.
Yeah, I understand, but I mean, if it starts to seem like we're going to, like we're reaching that zero deficit number, really, with only one year of budget to play with as opposed to two.
Yes, there is a limitation on it. So part of the dilemma on this, right, let's get back to this. Part of the dilemma on this, hopefully you see where the March comes from. March is a month away, and some days. And those typically are important, large conversations to have, that require a lot of work with HR, a lot of conversations with staff to do that. That is why the conversation really from the committee is June. So, yes, can this be done in this frame? I want to be careful, because there are items that, that can take place next year, you know, that, that may be able to get us there evolving collective bargaining. So, yes, so, so June, let me back up. So deliverables. So plan to make recommended reductions. Plan to make recommended reductions by budget adoption. At second interim. So that's when the plan will come forward. So, the plan isn't going to have specifics at that point. It's basically sharing that this is, this is what we're going to do, and we're going to do it by budget adoption. The group's not going to have a lot of time to meet. First interim will, second interim will happen in just a matter of months. Daniel, and then Barbara.
I have a question for county office.
Yes.
Do you have templates or districts that have done something similar like this that maybe we can use as a resource to?
No. But I would, but I would, I definitely offer up our, our help in developing a plan that is more technical in nature that you can build from.
Thank you.
I think that's what you're looking for.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think I still have a question about the specificity of the plan from the committee, because at first glance, I could see it'd be just really easy to say, X amount of dollars is equivalent to this many FTEs. Use the LCAP as a guide and prioritize accordingly, but I'm sure there has to be more specificity, and they'll need more guidance with how to, you know, look at it in terms of programs versus...
Yes, I think, so, yes, a good question. Like, what I hear you say is, on the surface, it sounds very simple. Let's look at the math, let's look what sort of an average is, and plug in the numbers, and come up with something. So I would agree with that. On the surface, it is. What I would see, the work with the committee as we lead up to sort of that harder conversation, is laying the background in terms of what are some of the things, what could some of the things look like? In other words, what does a programmatic reduction look like? What are some of the programs we're talking about? What are sort of the order of magnitudes that these can generate? And what are the impacts to LCAP in those? And so, at a committee level, we have those conversations around programmatic, around staffing. We would spend time in regards to sort of what the non-negotiables are, such as, for example, I would argue like class size, because that would come up, like, why is this a non-negotiable? You know, principles, you know, why do we have to have a principle on all our sites? So we're going to lay some of that, but at the same time, we're going to show where, where is, because they're going to say, "Well, where is their room?" Like, so what can we do? So we're going to have to give them some parameters of which they can operate by. And so those parameters are primarily going to be in the programmatic area. They'll be a little bit in the stuff, but as we know, there's a lot of stuff out there. You know, they can talk about, you have to be very careful, but they can talk about sort of timelines of major curricular adoptions, right? Another path in the past, right? Because the board is well aware, we have major curricular adoption. Those cost money to bring in new standards, new programs, new curriculum. But those, that stuff is smaller. Those are generally one time, you go and you buy a book, and you're not going to buy it again typically every year. So, so while the, the number is the easier part, as we prepare them for getting ready, so by budget adoption, if we can have something the county says, "The board is committed to reduce the equivalent of X FTE." And that FTE is going to then indicate, you know, what does this look like? How, are we going to get there? Then what that does now is it allows this next fiscal year then to be the year that that happens now. The level specificity begins to, to come together. The potential layoffs will happen in March of 2019, and programmatic reductions, if they can't happen that year, then would certainly happen in the following year. At the same time, the parcel tax conversation happening. So we got to time that in such a way that, I think everybody here, and this is part of our sharp last time, that we're not premature in getting that out as it relates to parcel tax, because that's where I think we run some risk in that if we're premature in, in a level of reduction that a parcel tax can address, I think we create more harm in that process. And so we will know that more in February, and by the end of February, so that this becomes clear for next year. Right? June versus November versus some other time becomes very clear, because by June, if it's a June, county office is going to know, "Okay, that didn't happen," or "That didn't happen." If it's November, we will know if that happened or that didn't happen. So therefore, it allows us to make the adjustments and to determine how much of a delta is left. Barbara.
Okay, so to review, if I understand, March 13th is the key rate for the Fiscal Advisory Committee?
March 13?
February.
I think it's a February date.
Yeah. And there's one in March as well.
Okay, so there's only February, and the one I saw was...
There could be everyone in March. I know there's one coming up.
So what I'm hearing is, you're saying staff, it's you guys, right, are going to be offering, presumably at the February meeting, some specific ideas about what could be considered here? So you're going to be giving, you said, staff will be presenting a kind of an outline that this group in February and March will be considering. Is that so? Is that, do I understand that correctly?
By June. I don't know if necessarily February or March. If there is a March, then yes, that would be one. We've talked about maybe needing an extra meeting to get to that level of specificity.
But, but staff will
Will work with this.
Start working.
Set up that, those initial meetings with some possibilities.
With some frame.
A framework, some scenarios perhaps, or something like that, so that they won't be operating in any kind of isolation, because it's been a long time since they have met on such an issue like this.
Yes.
So, and then, and then if other meetings are necessary, the June deadline will include much more levels of specificity, and presumably at that point, show our level of demonstrated commitment. Is that what we're, is that...
That's a good question for Torino. So, by the June, again, I'm cautious of putting specificity in program at this point, ahead of some knowledge of where the board wants to go with parcel tax. Now, this is certainly open to conversation, because what you have to think about is, if you play, let's play this out. Let's say that in June, there's some level of specificity that indicates by level of priority. These are the, this is my experience of it. This is the level of programmatic reductions the committee recommends, and it will list, you know, everything, programmatic and non-programmatic. So as soon as a list becomes public, it now becomes a target, and it now becomes the conversation from that point forward. Regardless of everything else good that will happen, that list is now out there. And so I want to be careful about being premature on that. Absolutely, we need to be ready for that. So the conversation with the group, and this is, I think, where Barbara's struggling with, what will be important is, and again, I'm thinking a little bit out loud here, but it could be, "Okay, group, let's think about some of the great programs we have in these districts." We can ask the group to, you know, there'll be a lot of stakeholders, so they'll know great programs in this district. And, and we will share, "Okay, these are programs that you know, and that you love, and that you cherish." By the same token, they have a cost, and they have a cost because they either run at smaller ratios, they either run at, you know, reduced loads, whatever it is, they have a cost. And so we get the group to think about all of these different programs. So now, we've sort of put a face to some of the things that we're talking about. We haven't put dollars on it, we haven't put a face on it. Program, 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 you know, this level of staffing, this level of staffing, whatever it is. So what it does is, in here, we have now generated an unorganized list, so that based upon whatever number we get here, right, and based upon when, when and if we land on a parcel tax, we'll determine when we need to come back to this group now to prioritize that list. So once we get the list now, internally, we're going to be, we're going to cost that. That's my experience. As soon as the group comes out, that we have to cost everything, because what we need to know is, did we do enough, right? Because if we cost it and say, "Okay, group, we're not quite there," okay, then, then we need to, we need to make an adjustment. You know, if it's over, then you prioritize and you reduce the level, but if you're not. So the purpose of this group then is to help, help with the list, to help think of things. We're not going to come back to them, I don't, this is again, this is the thing I, I don't envision coming back to them with cost. I don't envision coming back to them with priority at this stage. Again, as soon as you prioritize, as soon as you put cost, now everything is, now it's all sort of out there, and people, people will line up. But we need to have the conversation, so staff can begin to cost things out, so that when we come back, we now have that information ready. Okay, this is the program, this is the cost, this is the item, this is the cost. So therefore, once we get the parcel tax conversation more delineated, we now have definitive dates. If I was a county, certainly, okay, this is when it needs to come, because your parcel taxes didn't happen, and you said this amount, what does that look like?
I have now, yet another, I don't know if it's a follow-up or a concern, I know these two, what these two do now. I mean, this is a tremendous additional job to put, you know, for you two to have. Is it, I mean, how do you see that in terms of your workload? Is it a continuation of what you've already seen that you have started to do, or is it, are you going to need, what kind of supports are you going to need to provide this kind of context for this committee?
We'll be okay. The three of us have already had conversations about the non-negotiable items that obviously we'd want to involve all the stakeholders in the conversations, but, but the work has begun.
I think for us, particularly in services, looking at, you know, the staffing plan and looking, you know, we should have some level of counts for next year's enrollment and section allocation by that March 28th date. You know, so looking at that, you know, taking a closer look at the staffing plan, I think would be the first thing we would do. You know, making sure that we are sort of cutting as close as we can and staying within the staffing ratios. And I think also taking into consideration some different trends that we haven't in the past, which is like, you know, loss over the school year, what percentage of students do we lose over each school year, and building that into our staffing plan, which we haven't done in the past.
Yeah, it sounds really flippant. You've heard me say it before, but I don't mean it to sound flippant at all, but the money is in the master schedules, it truly is. So we've talked about different ways of approaching the master schedule in August, because there is, we have now, we've done some work in looking at, at the number of students we lose over a period of time at the Conference of High Schools. Typically, the San Andreas Times-Gallows report, so they don't just disappear. But, but looking at, at tightening up section allocations early on, in anticipation that the school will actually be of lower enrollment in January, February than it is in August, it makes it tougher on the site administration to do that scheduling, but it's not unusual way to do business. In our district, we've had the luxury of not having to, to account for scheduling that manner in years past, where many other school districts have. So we've been thinking about, not so much always just, I mean, programs equal people. When you talk about a reduction program, you're talking about human beings associated with the program. So it's not always about elimination of a program, it's about approaching a program in a different manner to tighten it up.
So I have a follow-on. I think that the one advantage of doing, getting this information, now that we understand that if we go out for a parcel tax in November, we're going to have to take some action. All this work will be helpful. Do you have anything to add? Because I know, I mean, you, with your staff, you're, you're, you're the manager of your staff. Do you have anything else to add to what has been said about your staff resources to tackle this?
I think Lars alluded to, we, at a cabinet level, we've already been having
So you're already, you've already been dealing with this?
We've been talking about it for a number of
We have.
Meetings now, some, some very difficult conversation on a programmatic level that, that could generate, you know, large savings. They're equally painful, but they're non-negotiable, we believe, non-negotiable items. At the same time, I don't think we're going to spend time getting it down to an exact science, right? We're looking to see where we're within sort of an order of magnitude of, okay, this program is going to translate to roughly this. Again, because we have limited staff time, we can't spend hours to say we need exactly how many this is. Okay.
Right.
This is roughly, so we'll have orders of magnitude showing that amount. So as a staff, as a cabinet team... So, as a staff, as a county team, we sort of have to be ready to, to, to share with the LCAP group and the fiscal advisory because we don't expect them to all of a sudden have all of these ideas. These are things that we've been thinking about for a long time. I know Lars drives home, as Tara, in her work, you know, we think about these things and we throw these out each other. So, that's pretty radical, but yeah, that's maybe one that, that, that certainly, and we do. We said, okay, is that bargainable, is that not bargainable? All of these things that, that we need to be prepared for the group. But at the same time, we need to allow the group the freedom to say, okay, let's think about, what are the things that you value in this, in this district? What are the things that are important to you? And what are, what are the programs that you see? And so, we're going to talk about that and say, all of those have a cost. These are, this is, this is why we have it. And then, with that now, again, allows us to create that list. And it says, okay, we have a list. These are things that we've talked about. Now, at some future point, that has to be prioritized, that has to be cost.
Thank you.
Michael?
So, I have mentioned this before, I'm going to mention it again, which is, it's reasonable to assume that we have a certain percentage of our student population who are not in fact residents of this district. And the question I have is, are we expending adequate efforts to, to determine that? And if we don't have the resources to do the proper investigation, you know, what would it cost us to obtain, right, to find those resources? And what would we expect, you know, the yield to be, if you will, in terms of identifying students, whatnot, you know, who are not residents of the district? I know there are other residents in Marin County who have been through this process and it ended up being a substantial, it communicated to me that it ended up being a substantial savings. So, that ought to be, you know, as we're looking at everything, right, you said, right?
Yeah.
This definitely ought to be something that we're looking at.
That can be brought up. Let me share a little bit, and I would invite Tara to share more. This is one that certainly I've, I've heard from some of our feeders and the work that they have done as it relates to determining residency in our, in our district. Aside from the laws continuing to move in support of the student, the, the district itself has always required the same level of oversight, which isn't an easy one in terms of establishing residency. If you are in a sort of a rental situation, you know, everything from showing some proof that, that you're in a, you know, a lease in this community, to, you know, your, your bills and so forth matching up. To, to, to go further than that, you know, in checking with, you know, our feeders, that's sort of the level that they did. When, and I can be more specific here because, you know, it is for the public. And speaking with, with Paul at Mill Valley, and I don't know if this would happen here, it was interesting, and I don't know how many years ago they did it. He said, the mere fact that they were going to do this caused some people to leave. He says, they never, they never got to the point of checking because he said, they just, they just left. So the actual amount of people who were actually then turned away, he said, was relatively small. I would say, I would say it was on the order of a few dozen, on a 5,000, I don't know how many kids they had, but he said around 20 kids. He says, the net was bigger because he said they had people who just, who just stopped coming. And he, you know, he's not going to make a assumption, they just stopped coming because they knew, they had heard this. This was anecdotally from speaking with Paul when they did this, and they had not since done a similar effort on that. I'm not sure, I'll let Tara weigh in in regards to residency sort of verification processes.
David, right, the laws have changed a little bit in favor, you know, you used to be able to sort of do recon, but now you have to inform a student if you're investigating their residency. Which I think, to Paul Johnson's point, that might do it for some people. We do require, you know, what we do every year is, we send our hard copy of the report card to each semester. And that is one of the indicators we use that somebody might not attend the district because those don't get forwarded because they're student doc records, so they get returned to us.
Oh, interesting. I didn't realize that.
So we can go through those and see, you know, and when we get the return, we go back and say, we need, you know, this got returned, we need to use kind of new address and new sorts of residence. You cannot just log on to e-school as a parent and change your address. You have to bring that, that documentation in. So those are some of the ways that we do watch it. And, you know, aside from that, we do have some students who are under a care affidavit. You know, so if this is my niece and I signed a care affidavit, there's not a whole lot we can do other than try to ensure that that child is living with there and say, okay, that means you're, you are the main contact, we're going to contact you, you know, and those are all things that we do, you know? You know, and I honestly, I have no sense of what percentage of our students are actually no longer or are more residents of our area.
But I think it's a good suggestion, maybe one that we could certainly broach with the group to see. I believe also what MV did, Mill Valley did, was I think they did, when they do this, they did essentially what they called a full audit or something. That year, they just sent out, like, I think they made everybody, I think they made everybody just reregister, like, I think they, they said they just, they just cleaned the books, you know? If you're good, you're good. We just, they just did a clean audit. That's when it all turned out. Also, they haven't done it since then. We certainly could do that. It's got pros and cons. I don't want to say we certainly, that's going to involve some staff time. So I don't know if we can do that manpower-wise, but if I recall, they did a full audit. They just sent, everybody had to, had to reregister essentially. Show us you live here. And I believe you have a right to do that.
Yeah, I think you have an annual right to ask.
Yeah. Which I think what they do is...
For updated information.
Right. So, and that is something we can propose with the group. That might take some bandwidth, but...
I think it would take a lot of...
See, the point of it, right, the average, average cost of FTE is $113,000 in our schools, one FTE.
Barbara, you got your hand up, or Laura?
Yes, but Laura did.
I have two questions. The fiscal and LCAP advisory group is meeting on February 13th, and I'm thinking this is a big ask. They don't, they don't know about this yet, and it's two weeks away. So I'm hoping that we can be as...
Front load?
Yeah, front load as much as possible and be efficient and perhaps not recreate the wheel of the budget study committee that happened two years ago. If there are some things that we can glean from that whole process, which was many, many months of many people with the stickies and the priorities, some things have happened over the past two years that may, that are different. You know, that it's, it's not going to be the same, but I'm hoping, given the timeline that we're looking at and the deliverables that we are tasked with, that we can pull from the budget study committee and maybe give that to this LCAP fiscal advisory group as a starting point. Or at least, you can talk about that, perhaps.
That's a good idea.
And then, I have a question for Torina, and that is, are these deliverables what you had in mind when you wrote this letter to us? Is this adequate for us by second interim to do this kind of planning?
Good question. And, and I've talked a little bit with David about this. What we would like to see in terms of a deficit plan, you can view this or think about this in terms of like a down payment on the full plan. And what we would like to see that would go before the board is sort of a resolution that codifies the direction that this workshop is generating. So, just a, a way to capture the delta, the timeline, the deliverables that's been identified here and charge the process that you're asking your LCAP fiscal advisory committee to do. And you could think of it as the first chapter in maybe multiple chapters over the next 12 to 18 months. Because what we would envision is, maybe you would update the resolution once the, once the district has made a determination about your parcel tax and whether that parcel tax passes. We would want to refresh, and with each additional version of the resolution, we're going to ask for more specificity, just to demonstrate the clear articulation of the commitment that the district's engaged with reducing the deficit.
So each chapter requires a resolution?
Right.
Tweaking the resolution?
Yeah, I would say building on it. So, the first one is going to be, are capturing what's, what's been decided and the direction that the board has given through this workshop. Just all the things, all the takeaways that David's going to have at the end of this workshop. Capture that in your, in a resolution that comes before the board when you next meet. And that's also going to provide clear direction to your fiscal advisory committee, your LCAP fiscal advisory committee. And then, as they work through their work over the next several months, come June or July, depending on the timing, we'll want, you know, ideally, it would come to us with the, with the adopted budget. So for the adopted budget in June, it would also accompany, your second interim is going to, going to come with a resolution. Your adopted budget's going to come with a resolution that adds a little more specificity.
Okay. So you don't need this first resolution until second interim?
Correct.
Okay. We don't need it for Tuesday night?
No.
We have a few other things on Tuesday. Thank you. Barbara?
I, okay, just, let me get back to you. I thought I heard you say...
I thought I heard you say that we were starting to drift back into a November parcel tax date. We haven't determined yet whether or not, if, what the date's going to be. So, will this work to get us to the June date be involved? At what point will it be involved in determining whether it's a June parcel tax ask or a November?
I would say, this work is independent of June or November. I think June or November is more for the board's discussion on Tuesday and the following meeting as it relates to the polling results. Because I think that probably weighs more heavily personally for the board to make a decision as it relates to polling. Certainly, it will have an impact for when we can count the revenue. But for the purposes of the work that these, this committee will be doing, while we can certainly talk with them about broadly of a parcel tax, the work will need to be independent of that. And I agree with Torina. Should a parcel tax happen and pass, then yes, we would absolutely go back and adjust that. But the committee can't make those assumptions. That date and timing is for the board to decide. I only shared for us to count the revenue, that just, the board needs to be aware of November, we don't get to count that revenue until the following fiscal year.
I think what happened is, I made the comment that we can still use their work if it turns out we go out for a parcel tax in November because we know now that we have to make cuts if it goes out. And that's what I was referring to, not that we were absolutely...
Okay. Any other questions? Chuck, you've been quiet. You're absorbing all of this, I can tell.
Yeah, you know, one, one thought I have, and I think maybe it's directed more at Lars. But it seems that, you know, by pushing a lot of this stuff off onto 219, 220, we're kicking the can down the road to, you know, have to enact some really extreme cuts all at, all at once. But is there a chance that if we look at programs, you know, between now and June, within the district, you know, programs that are quote-unquote overstaffed, that we can make some adjustments there? But then you have to start looking at credentials.
Well, any adjustments, I mean, if you're talking about reduction in staff, you know, that's honored before March 15th.
No, I'm not talking about reduction of staff. I'm talking about reallocation, you know, if you, if you eliminate...
Shifting personnel.
Yeah, if you eliminate, you know, if you eliminate some programs, you know, some programmatic stuff that is, you know, got very low, very low ratios.
Correct.
Is that, is that something, is that something you'd be looking at?
We definitely will. What we can do is, if, if there are programs that are, that are running with very low enrollments, and we make the determination in conjunction with obviously the sites and all the other stakeholders too, but make the, make the decision that that program is, is no longer affordable. We certainly can shift staff to other more traditional roles that would hopefully reduce the amount of people we'd need to hire. We'd want to be doing that literally in the immediate, you know, having those conversations now though because, you know, we typically, hiring season is in the spring. We typically have the bulk of our hiring done as, as graduation season approaches. Because, you know, we want first crack at the best candidates.
Yeah.
So, we try and do very little hiring over the summer, you know? The hiring we do over the summer is because we just haven't been able to find the right person persons. So, we need to have those conversations now. I will tell you that Tara and I do spend time, literally every day together, looking at enrollments and various programs and so forth, having those kind of conversations. Now, have we pulled the trigger on anything yet? No.
Tara has already leaned on our principals to certainly look at that. You'll know when that's pulled, if it's pulled, because again, we've had these conversations and, like you said...
Yeah, and I, I think it's not just classes, you know, with low enrollments, but it's also classes that have release period.
Yes.
Attached to them. Yeah, because you know, you may have 25 students, but you've got two periods and you're looking at 12 and a half.
Some of them have less than that, and they don't just have a release period, they have a stipend associated with it. So, you know, we, yeah, we're, we're having those conversations.
And that's actually all part of the staffing plan. So the work that gets done before the staffing plan is that we, you know, everything's at e-school. We run all of our section allocations, and then we sit down with principals and we literally go through and say, okay, right now, you know, in your English department, you have, you know, you have 15.2 FTE, which is this many sections that can serve this many students. Next year, you have this many students enrolled in English. We think either you need .2, .4, or you should be able to absorb it all with your existing allocation, right? So that's, that's the work that we already do every year. So this year, you know, and we are literally, you know, so by March 1st, we usually try to have those section numbers, like the first rough draft of them. So all of that work will happen. And these are also conversations we've been having for a couple of years. We've been sort of throwing shots across the bow, if you will, of like, you know, these certain classes are running low again, these classes, like, to start having those conversations early in the year with these teachers, if you've got particularly leftovers that are running small. So hopefully, the principals are ready. They should be.
We've had the conversations. I sent a lengthy note to principals upon our return from the holiday recess, talking about in preparation for, you know, my master schedule, here's some things to consider. So, conversations have been had, but, but we haven't done the heavy lifting yet. And the board, the board will, you know, eventually it will fall to the board because I anticipate people being unhappy. I mean, these programs are placed for a reason. They, they do good work, you know, they, they make a difference in the lives of, of our students. So as you start to trim up a little bit, I anticipate people standing right there at the podium and saying, you don't care, you know, and how can you do this?
I've been there.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt.
I've been at the podium.
But there's no question that, that in order to, to put together a plan that, that would meet the county's approval and, and actually have real meaning, it does involve some really difficult decisions and, and reduction in scope of program. I mean, there's just no getting around that. It's a, we are a people business. You know, we don't, as David said earlier, we don't have a lot of staff. You know, we don't have a lot of staff. We have people.
Yeah, but Chuck's point, yes, to all that, but Chuck's point, which is said better than what I tried to say before, was, we can't, if we, if we're calling this a two-year plan...
Yeah, and it's a one-year plan.
Right, to reach, to reach that equilibrium, right? Then, we've got to take, it's, you know, we've got to take, it would behoove us to take some steps this year.
Right.
Rather than load it all into the second year, or it really isn't a two-year plan.
So if I, if I hear, and thank you Chuck, somebody's got to be the bad guy and, and do that. So, let's go down that path. What I hear is the board is willing to consider that with, with some level of seriousness at first interim. Sorry, at the staffing plan, when the staffing plan comes forward in April. Because, because again, that's an action event. So when the board takes action, we can count that in the first interim.
That's right.
But I think Lars' message is very clear. When those programs come out and, and the one thing that this board is going to do is transparency, it'll be very transparent, there will be a line, there will be a line there. And we can absolutely, I think in our fairness, lean on the principals and say, if you didn't come to this meeting, watch the video. Watch the board. They're serious. We need to make some reductions and we need to make them certain later. If this is what I'm hearing and this is why it's important, we certainly, and I certainly as superintendent, can go down that path and let our principals know that... as superintendent, can go down that path and let our principals know that these are programmatic, non-negotiated reductions that can happen. And Chuck's right, we look at credentials, Lars, that's where his work, Tara's programming. But the board needs to be very clear that that podium will get busy in April.
Well, I agree with both Michael and Chuck that we started this workshop talking about how difficult it is to make a correction too quickly, and we want to stick with this timeline. I agree that I'm prepared that we do something this year, you know, by the staffing plan, definitely.
Okay.
I don't know how the other board members feel, I can't read your body language, so maybe you can describe how you're looking at this.
I mean, I would like it if you magicians over here could figure out how to make the line as short as possible, but, you know, that's why they pay us the big bucks, is to make these unpopular decisions.
Well, that, I, I think, in, in all seriousness, I think the way to, the way to keep that line as short as possible is to work hard at, at reducing program that, that affect the least number of students.
Yeah.
You know? But there are some very, very successful programs in the school district that affect a small number of students.
Right. Understood.
So, you know?
You have to know that.
Yeah.
It's just not going to get easier.
No.
I guess that's where it is. It's, it's, if we have a long line this spring, we're going to have a long line next fall too. So I'm not really, we're, we're already there, so.
If I could just add one thing I think, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
An un- enviable, un- enviable position, if I can say that, at seven o'clock at night. I know for us, what helps us make decisions when we're looking at these things is leaning on our goals and our values.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I know that the board has specific goals, and I would hope that that is part of all, you know, we share with the LCAP, maybe our LCAP goals. But, you know, I, I think what makes decisions easier and facing some anger is when you know you've rested on...
Right. You're still...
Your values and goals.
Still the values.
Yeah. And some, you know, and then we will, we will upset people for sure. It just depends which ones.
No, it's very...
And one of the primary endeavors this year of, of the district, of the board, of all employees in our school district is this notion of an increased equity lens. So, you know, we do need to, I think, that needs to be a factor here too.
Oh, absolutely.
That, that, that those with less, you know, we, we shouldn't take, it might look uneven, but we really have to also protect those with less.
Oh, absolutely.
I think all four of our LCAP goals are what will be, I mean, that's what I'm looking at. I think that's what the whole board looks at all the time.
Right.
Barbara, you want to provide something?
Well, I've heard the word several times now in the past 10 minutes, serious, serious. Is there any doubt here that we're not serious? I mean, I think that it's serious as a board, and it's two and a half years, and if, if, is there any, what, what in our behavior is going to communicate to anybody that we are not serious? That's what I want to know. What do we need to avoid doing to, to, how do we need to stay on serious? Because I don't know how much more serious we can be as board about this in terms of demonstrating to ourselves and to anybody else, so...
Who are you asking that question of? I'm just curious, are all of us talking, or...
Well, I think David used the word serious, so I would say to you, what's going to indicate that we're not?
I think the indicators of that will come as we, you know, march through the year and we, and we look at, I think in fairness negotiations processes, and we look at reclassification processes. These are, these are things that change this. They change this. I think in all fairness and all bluntness, they change this. And as the county office knows, those aren't included now. So if we take actions that save money on the one hand, but do other actions that cost money on the other, that's where we have to figure out, okay, are we still serious, or does that indicate some level of different purpose? So those messages have to be clear to who we work with in terms of why we did that. I'm not saying we can't, we just have to be clear in terms of why that is, because they, for me, it affects this, right? It absolutely will affect this. And so as we march through these coming months and we have some serious and, and I would argue painful conversations, first interim, staffing plan, at the same time, the needs of our employees to, to be well compensated in this community, which you'll see at the next meeting is, is something that is valued by our community, those will compete with each other, right? They will compete with each other. So how, how do we make that work? And this group is not going to be tasked with that side of the stuff, right? That's, that's the board's role to, to be tasked with. This group will be tasked with coming up with the list. And one that I can now share, that we, we will, we will be ready to, to have that in the work with Tara and Lars by your... I appreciate you.
Yeah. I, I think unfortunately that this will not be taken seriously by the broad public until we take action, or it appears that we are about to take action, which is harmful or inimical to the best interests of our staff and students. I think that's the point at which this will get taken seriously, but not until then, unfortunately.
I think Chuck's right before, you know, I've had conversations recently with a few people who, you know, they're going about their business, they're really not that aware of how dire the situation is.
Yeah.
You know?
Thank you. I think you've all spoken. I do, because of time, Leslie President.
Yes, thank you.
I want, I, I think, as a check, if you want to allow public comment before we get to this closing, I think that would be...
So Mimi.
I'd, I'd like to thank Torina again.
We're not done yet.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. We have pub, we thought we would open it up for public comment, and then do you, would you like to still thank Torina, and then, did you want to stay for public comment?
Well, we, I can thank her twice.
Yeah, why, that's what I was going to suggest. I feel like I'm...
I don't have a problem with that.
Mimi, would you like to provide a comment?
Three minutes, is that...
Yes, and we'll do, we'll do three minutes.
So, Mimi Willard here, and I want to start by telling you that I, I know that you have faced some very difficult decisions. I think you're going about it in the right way. I think it's good that you didn't put the bond first, because you clearly need some help from the community in terms of a parcel tax. And I think that you are also very prudent to realize that it doesn't make matters any better to kick the can down the road, because your, your reserve situation will get steadily worse. According to the numbers that were in the first interim, your reserves will be 17 million at the end of this year, 10 million at the end of next year, and 4.5 million at the end of 2020. Unfortunately, as I do the calculation, the parcel tax alone won't get you out of this hole. If you get all the way down to 4.5 million and you want to get yourself back up to 14 or 15 million, you need $10 million of parcel tax revenues. And by my calculation, 300, and 34,961 parcels at $286 apiece would raise you 10 million. So that's basically doubling your parcel tax just to dig your way out of the hole. It doesn't actually help you with the ongoing escalation in your costs. And so, and then there are a couple of assumptions that are in the model that I think are risky for you at this point in the cycle. One of them is a 4.88% increase in your property values over the next couple of years. This year, you're at 4.5. I don't see a reason why it would accelerate, especially since we're late cycle here. You've got contract negotiations, that's going to be an issue, and I think most districts don't build those into their models till they actually happen. And then you've got calsters and calpers, which are about a quarter of your budget, and they're just going to keep getting bigger. So there's, there's a problem here, and you're obviously going to need to make some cost reductions. So, and then I would say finally that I don't know really what the LCAP does and who's on the LCAP, but I have volunteered, and Laura Epple has volunteered, and we could find other people who would volunteer. I think it would be a good idea to have a taxpayer representative in whatever group it is that, or, or meetings that happen, that help guide the district as to what might be realistic in terms of the, the community buy-in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So David, you wanted to have more of a, I didn't see any, any other public comment? Thank you.
Yes, I want to make sure we're clear on the, on the next steps as it relates to what we've gathered here tonight. So we have a LCAP Fiscal Advisory Group that will meet in roughly two weeks, where staff, cabinet will share the direction by the board to, you know, go over basically this information, close the gap, bring the reserve up, and, and provide some background in regards to what this group needs to do and by when, which includes, as, as Torina mentioned with the county office, to bring a plan forward by second interim of this year, the timelines of what we're going to do and by when and how much, and also some level of programmatic reductions that will need to take place at budget adoption for the county office. Concurrently to that, we will work with this group as it relates to reductions that can take place in the current year on a programmatic level, working with, with Tara and Lars and our principals. This is a time where we can make those changes. This is one where we've had, I think in fairness, had these conversations with the principals. I think at this point, based upon the conversation here tonight, we are ready to move forward with, with essentially making those things happen. And, and being clear that, that the time is now for that. We need to do this now, and we need to look at our LCAP goals and making sure with our equity lines that we're doing what our LCAP goal says, but staying true to, you know, the very real, very real need to reduce our structural deficit, because this is where we are now. So that's going to take place over the coming weeks. February will primarily be used for the parcel tax conversation, so the board's well aware those will take significant time, based upon the preliminary work Laura Leslie and I have done with our strategists and research, Gaby Research. We'll take a significant amount of time in the February timeframe, as well as the work of HR and, and services regarding our probationary conversations. It'll be important in the February timeframe. So that's, that's a large part of February. Then will come March, when we will have the second interim, so this group will be doing its work simultaneously in February, so that if, at first interim, we will have that for the board. But at the same time, they can begin to work with us on the staffing plan conversation, the programmatic piece. They're not going to have to approve it, that's the board's role, but the programmatic conversation as it relates to that. So we'll verify if there's a February meeting, it sounds like, from Barbara thinks there may be February. If not, certainly, I, I did anticipate possibly the LCAP meeting to add a meeting or two in there to get this work done. From there, once the parcel tax conversation flushes out, and as we approach the, the June conversation, we will begin to talk programmatic for the next year. So the group here has to do some legwork. We can't sort of just happen all at once. So we need to lay the groundwork for one of the programs that are out there. Again, we're not prioritizing, and we're not costing, but we need to have those conversations of what are the programs that have, you know, low ratios that, that exist within our system. And, and then staff will then go back and cost that out, again, internally. And then after budget adoption, once we have some parcel tax conversations, we'll determine really the next step. You know, if it's June, we have an indicator after that conversation. If it's November, we have an indicator after that conversation. Either way, after those, assuming that, that those are, you know, things that happen, again, these are assumptions, because I don't want to predict that that's where the board is going to go, we need then to, to really flesh out the details of the plan and say, okay, this is, these are now specific programmatically, this is the cost, these are the levels, the priority order, and the board needs to look at that in total, and then resolution level for the board. Again, I would, I would tie those to sort of those conversations around parcel tax June, parcel tax November. I know Mary's writing that, but we'll have that in the notes.
I'll have one too.
I'll let Torina, if she wants to add anything in closing, and then I'll turn back to Leslie.
I think the only thing I want to add is how appreciative we are as a county office to be working alongside all of you, the board, the staff, the community to the extent you want us to be and participate in the process along the way. We're happy to do that. It gives us great confidence in your ability to address your really big challenge. And I know you'll do it well and with fidelity and, and the spirit and out of respect for all of the hard work that's been done on the LCAP up until this point. So thank you.
Thank you, Torina, but also thank you Superintendent. I thought this was really, really productive and really appreciate all the information you brought and the time you took to give us really good recommendations. I came into this meeting wondering how in the heck we could get all this done, and you did it. So thank you very much. I found it very, very helpful.
And again, thank you, Torina.
We get adjourned?
We adjourned?
I was waiting. Didn't anyone want to thank anybody else? Thank you very much.
Can we stay till 10?
Yeah.